Okay, good evening again, and I'm calling the meeting to order. And before we begin, I will ask the town manager to read us the protocols for the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a reminder to everybody watching that this meeting is being recorded. So we'll post it on the town website and on the town's YouTube page for folks to watch later or re-watch later. We also have a live transcript going for those who wish to follow along that way. It is a Zoom function, so apologies for any errors that come through on that end, but hopefully should be useful for you. In terms of public comments, there may be a few opportunities for public comment during this meeting. Folks can chat with me in the chat, but you can also use the raise hand function, both to indicate that you'd wish to make a comment at any point. And I will be sure to pass that along so that we call on you when the timing is right. If this meeting gets interrupted and we're not able to continue productively, then we'll just cancel, we'll end the meeting. I'll disseminate a new link for us to join so that we can continue and carry on with the business that we've got on the agenda for this evening. And with that, I will turn it back over to you.
Okay, thank you. And we also request that anyone who is in the meeting to block their video until they are called on.
Yes, thank you for that.
Until their agenda item comes up. So with that, we will begin with the public comment period. If any, I see, I see Matt Zapp come forward.
All right, thank you. I just have one request of the council. For a few meetings in a row now, the pool committee has asked the council just consider extending the closing date of the pool. Hasn't been added to the agenda. I know it was part of the work session, but there was some incorrect information that was passed along at the work session. And so I'm just asking, since this is literally the last council meeting where we could possibly extend the closing date, that you would add it to the agenda. I just have four very quick points to make along this line. One, after meeting with Rob from American Pools, Matt Trolinger and I met with him last week, and he said in no uncertain terms would extending the pool season by two weeks delay any construction. Number two, the contract that we have for the pool season, this is regards to the cost, currently has the last week of August as 10 to nine, but actually the last week of August, MCPs is in session. So really, we should be at one to eight. So there would be some cost savings there which we could use to defer to staying open. Number three, in addition to cost savings, we are due credits from American Pools. They conducted two lifeguard training classes at the pool this summer, and we're due credit for that, which would again also help offset any cost of staying open an extra week or two. And finally, I took a look at the excellent data that Shannon Rovak analyzed last year based on the pool usage last summer. And I want to point out that in 2021 September, actually had greater attendance than May. In addition, September 12th was the third highest attended day of the entire summer at the pool, as well as represented the second highest number of total households. Furthermore, September 19th was the 11th highest date. That would be if we stayed open two weeks. And there was literally no dates in the entire month of September that were in the lowest 15 attended dates during the entire summer. So September tends to be hot. It tends to be very well attended. And I would just ask the council at least consider staying open one week or two weeks additional, and I will stop there. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Chair. And I believe all that information was contained in the letter that you wrote. So thank you. And, and I did get the request, you know, you know, I set the agenda with the president's approval. And the reason I didn't add it to the agenda is because there's some more information that Matt needs to get from a second potential bidder on the pool. And once we get that information, then if it turns out that it would be possible to extend the season, we'll just call a special meeting. So, so I didn't really think there was any reason to discuss it tonight without having this additional information that maybe Matt can add to that, Matt Trolinger. Matt, if you want to add to that.
I'd see that Matt Zapp has his hand up as well.
But why don't you reiterate that you're getting another bid?
Yeah, I don't have too much more to add other than, you know, we, we've spoken with American Pool about some of their recommendations for the work that they think that we ought to do. And frankly, it makes a lot of sense, but I think we all also agree that it makes sense to get a third party and a second opinion on, on that work and do some type of analysis inspection that helps us have a clearer idea of exactly what work needs to be done, should be done this summer. So.
And that's what was all discussed at the work session. Okay, Mr. Chair, did you want to add something?
Yes, I just wanted to add that we're running out of time. In order, if we were to extend a week or two weeks, but I know, again, either one, but if we were to extend past Labor Day, Helen, American Pool's, she needs to know by this Friday. So our timing here is such that, you know, if less the council can at least consider this.
If we get that, just like I said, if Matt is working very hard to obtain the extra information, and if he does, then we will call a special meeting. But, but there isn't enough information. I mean, any council member can add this to the agenda, and we can talk about this all night. But the fact is that I don't, I didn't feel that there was enough information to have an updated conversation. And Matt, Matt Trolinger will work hard to get that, and he'll be communicating with you. So when we come to the agenda, approve the agenda, if a council member wants to add it, that's their prerogative. But that's my response to you.
Okay, I would just ask that, yeah, it gets added tonight, if nothing else on a contingent basis.
Okay, thank you. Matt, did any, Mr. Town Manager, has any other resident wish?
No, not, not at this time. Nobody, at least nobody's indicated.
Okay, thank you. So the next item is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion?
It's moved.
Can we add this item to the agenda since we have received so many emails and requests?
Well, it requires, it requires a vote. That's why we have the approval of the agenda. So the agenda was moved and seconded. So if you want to make an amendment to that, propose your amendment.
Yeah, my amendment is since we have a committee chair who's made multiple requests for us to consider this, you know, we'd great to add it to the agenda to consider it.
Okay, is there a second on that amendment?
A second.
Okay, is there a discussion? I'll, I'll let the council president leave the discussion.
I think it's pretty clear there's an interest to discuss it. It's an important town function. So it sounds like we should add it to the agenda. Shannon, do you have any comments, thoughts?
Well, it doesn't, it just doesn't seem like we have all the information that is needed. And we discussed it at length in the work session already, and we don't have any new information at the work session. It said that, you know, we need this time to start working on the pool improvements. And so to me, nothing has really changed from that point. So, you know, I mean, I think that if we can get more information and if it's feasible and like we can call a special meeting, you know, maybe that's something to look at. But we seem to have a pretty lengthy discussion at the work session and, you know.
Yep. We could, we could do a provisional vote, like we extend it for two weeks with the proviso that if the winning bid requires us to close it two weeks earlier than the winning bid, then we will close it two weeks earlier.
I think that more of the issue was also that we don't know, like, we have certain money allocated to these repairs. And we are expecting, you know, to possibly go over those budgeted amounts. And so, you know, it's part of the deal, like, you know, I think it would just be prudent in this particular year to, you know, start these improvements as soon as we possibly can so that we can have a real robust, you know, understanding of what this is going to cost and how long it's going to take. And, you know, I just, I feel like we shouldn't have things being delaying this if we're, if we have the ability to start this right away.
Okay, thank you very much, Shannon.
Want a quick reaction to that? I understand in Matt's, Matt Trolinger's write-up, there is new information. If I read that correctly, Matt, you make a statement saying that possibly a week wiggle room exists, given the information you have today. If I understood your, I think you have a statement along those lines in your write-up. So that is an update from our work session information where it sounded like we had no wiggle room. So it'd be good to get that clear, and that's why I'm suggesting we add it to the agenda. So we don't need to discuss it now. It would be good to hear from Matt what information he has since the work session, based on his write-up to us in the packet today. And then we can, we can vote then.
So if we add it to the agenda, we can discuss in greater detail. Right now, we're just trying to decide whether or not to.
Exactly.
Add it to the agenda.
But I don't think that we have the final information from it because, you know, so then it comes up on the tonight's council meeting, and we say, oh, well, there may be a possibility that we can extend it a week. And then Matt has to go back and get the quotes and, you know, go back and forth. And so nothing will really be resolved from adding it to the agenda tonight versus just doing a special thing if it comes up and we're able to do it.
Well, this conversation that we just had, we would continue when the agenda came up, and we would hear from Matt as to what he put in his note, and then we'll talk through it. That's all we are doing.
Can I say something?
Yes, Debbie, you're next.
Thank you. I would rather call a special meeting to discuss this if it's the appropriate thing to do. We do have some new information. The new information is that it might cost us upwards of 500 grand to do this piping. And I just think that we are, we're in charge of the, we are, this need to be fiscally responsible here. And I am not sure that we are being fiscally responsible by, by adding this. I don't think we should bring it to our agenda. If it turns out that we're not going to add any more money to it, then maybe we can have a meeting and talk about it. But let's, let's talk about what this is going to cost before we say, oh, let's open it for another week. That's where I am.
Once again, that's what we would discuss.
But I think we've discussed all this. I think the other thing is we have discussed this several times. And the other thing is.
We only discussing whether we add it to the agenda.
Okay, the other thing is Kabir. Okay, all right, go on. I'm sorry.
No, we only, we have a pool committee chair, you guys are the liaison, you and Debbie, who's written multiple times, residents have written multiple times. He just showed up, he just showed up at the meeting, he's a resident, he just made a request. I think we can add it to the agenda. And when we get to the agenda, we can make these points.
Obviously, you know, it's great that Matt came. Matt's a great chair, okay? But we didn't have a lot of windfall of, let's keep the pool open in terms of emails, not unless they're going just to you and not to me, okay? And I just, I think we have discussed this and discussed this. Let's, let's have a special meeting if it looks like it's a good idea. Right now, I don't think it looks like a good idea.
I didn't say we had a windfall. There were residents who wrote to us, and Matt's wrote to us, and he just showed up. This is only a discussion of whether we add it to the agenda.
Okay, so thank you, Debbie. My, and we've heard from, obviously, Robin Kabir. My only, my, my concern is since we weren't planning to talk about this, I'm not sure we have any updated budget information to inform any decisions tonight. But I guess if there is a majority of the council that wishes to consider this, we can try and deal with it as best we can.
That's why I said earlier, that's why I said earlier in my comments that we would work expeditiously to get the information so that the best decision could be made. And, and tonight, rather than putting it on the agenda to have a discussion that doesn't have enough information to make a decision, you know, why extend the meeting to rehash all this stuff? We don't, as was pointed out, we don't have enough information so that you can make the best possible decision. So I, I don't, that's why I didn't put it on the agenda. You have the right to add it to the agenda. But I, I don't think it's necessary to take up all your time for that.
Right. Okay, so, so I guess, great discussion all around. Thank you for your inputs perspective also, Mr. Mayor. Am I correct that at this point, we just take a vote on whether or not?
Yeah, so, so there's a motion, there's, there's an amendment to the motion that Councilmember Kumar made, that was seconded by Councilor Barr, to add the item to discuss the extension of the pool season. All those in favor? All those opposed? Okay, so that failed. Now, the motion to approve the agenda. All those in favor? Okay, so for those of you that are interested in this topic, please be assured that Matt and I will be working to get this information so that if it's viable, we will call a meeting as soon as possible. So I think that everybody should be happy with that. Okay, the next item is the approval of the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
I'm moving to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Is there a second? Discussion, hearing not all this in favor, all this opposed. Thank you very much. Now we turn to our first, our only public hearing regarding 5702 Warwick Place. So we will begin. Today is August 1st, 2022. This is a hearing before the Town of Somerset Council for application 22-0812 to consider a building permit application submitted by Josh Freeman for the property located at 5702 Warwick Place. This hearing is being audited or recorded. We ask that all speakers speak one at a time, addressing the council when called upon, and to state their name and address for the record before making public comment. The hearing will observe the following order. First, the Somerset Town staff will present their findings and submit for the record a report on the application under consideration. Next, the applicant will present the application. Following that, the town council will have the opportunity to ask questions of the applicant's staff or other interested parties relevant to the application at hand. Then other interested parties will have the opportunity to ask questions of the applicant or present comments to the council. Then, if necessary, the applicant will have the opportunity for rebuttal testimony, after which the public comment period of the hearing shall be completed and the record closed. Finally, the council will deliberate and discuss among themselves the merits of the case, the findings of fact, and conclusions. The council may make a motion on a permit decision. If necessary, the town attorney will be asked to write a decision, and the town manager will be asked to issue a permit with the conditions voted on by the council and enumerated in the town attorney's decision. So we now begin this hearing with presentation by the staff. Mr. Manager.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I did submit a report for the council. Just to quickly go over it, the applicant, Josh Freeman, who's joined us this evening, is applying for a building permit for the construction of a deck in the rear yard of his property. There's also some interior renovations that will be taking place, but that don't require town permits. And part of that is actually converting part of the basement into an accessory dwelling unit. Doug can clarify, and maybe Josh too. My understanding at this point is that still waiting for final confirmation for Montgomery County to get us a stamped approved copy of the permit plans. But that's been in process with them for a while. I did just give a little bit of background info on the town's previous discussions on accessory dwelling units. I won't rehash that since it's already been submitted, but I'm happy to answer questions about that. And just noted that the construction does comply with the town setbacks and that the town arborist did take a look at the plans, but there are no trees being requested for removal and no trees within the impact area of the work. And so no tree protection plan that he's prescribed either. And with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Lomire.
Good evening. The applicant did submit a build permit to Montgomery County Department of Permitting Services on June 28th, and as of this afternoon, that permit had not been issued. And then I recommend that the council approve the building permit dumpster permit for the improvements at 5702 Warwick Avenue. But the town permit should not be issued until the town receives a copy of the county permit and a copy of the stamp approved plans. And that concludes my report.
Okay, does that?
That concludes the staff.
Okay, thank you. We will now have the applicant's opening statement, if necessary, in presentation. Or some, oh, Mr. Town Attorney has a question.
Yeah, I'm checking the website now. Matt, maybe you recall, was the accessory dwelling units ordinance adopted in February of 2022? We had, we had prepared and discussed an ADU ordinance, which would require as a condition of a permit that an applicant submit a copy of their landlord license issued by the county before approval of the final inspection of the project. So that would be a worthwhile condition of approval. Also that, I'm sorry, go ahead, Matt.
I was trying to go back through our records, and I know we discussed it in November. I did not, I did not think that we ended up actually adopting a policy yet at this point, that we had a few.
We did. Well, that's.
It would have been February 2022. I'm looking for the minutes.
Yeah, we Google minutes, yeah.
I don't have a signed copy of the ordinance which is having me questioned.
My recollection is that we had a debate.
Why don't, why don't we proceed with the hearing?
And I'll continue to look. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
The, to obtain a landlord's rental licenses pro forma. So.
There's also a parking requirement in the, in the draft.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll proceed and we'll proceed. I think, I think we can proceed. And then when the approval, when the decision is made, you can then advise the council on what contingencies that might be required. But let's proceed with the hearing. Mr. Freeman, thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Happy to answer any questions. This will be just a very small deck. In converting the basement to an accessory dwelling unit, we took out the, we'll be taking out the stairs between the kitchen and the basement. So the deck will actually provide, is really there for the purposes of providing stairs to get down to the back area where, where the garage is, where we have storage stuff. Otherwise, there's no direct access to it now that the stairs have been removed to, to create the ADU. The deck will not be visible from the street. 50% of the residents of the town who, who will actually even be able to see the deck without coming up the driveway or on this call, Mr. Mayor. And, and happy to answer any other questions folks have. It's really, it's a tiny deck largely for the purpose of enabling stairs going down to, to the back area of our house.
Okay, thank, thank you very much. Councilmember Circo, do you have any questions? Council President Circo, sorry.
No questions of, yeah, it seems like a modest construction project. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Barr.
No questions, and I will stipulate that the driveway is sufficiently long for additional cars associated with the ADU. So you don't need to continue to there.
Okay, thank you.
The ordinance was adopted, Mr. Mayor, at the February meeting.
Okay.
And so, yeah, prior to final inspection, the applicant needs to submit a copy of his Montgomery County landlord license for the ADU. So that would be a condition of approval.
Do we, do we know, by the way, you know, I used to be on the landlord tenant commission. Do we know if a landlord can obtain that license before the, the ADU is approved?
I don't, Mr. Mayor, but we, we've worded the ordinance in this way to require before final inspection, assuming that the county's not going to issue its license until there's a, you know, county permit for the construction and a certificate of occupancy. You know, the county's going to want to see, I imagine, plans for the unit before issuing the license.
Okay.
I just raised one thing, which is.
You'll have the opportunity for Ronald to bring that up. Councilmember Heller, do you have any questions?
And then, and then, Mr. Mayor, if I could just finish real quick before we go into the rest of the council discussion. The ordinance does provide that there needs to be a minimum of one onsite parking spaces. But existing parking area in a driveway or an existing garage may serve as the required onsite parking space for the ADU, provided a minimum of three parking spaces exists on the property. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. Councilmember Heller, do you have any questions?
No, I, I, I think Ron just, just, just addressed it. I was going to ask about the parking. Was there a parking for the ADU? It sounds like he asked to do that. And it sounds like he might have it, and he can speak to that when it's his turn to talk. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Kumar, do you have any questions?
Just to be clear, this is an application for the deck or for the ADU?
For the deck. It was my understanding in prior conversations with Matt that I didn't need to do anything for the ADU. That was entirely covered by the Montgomery County process. So this is actually news to me. But the application tonight is for the deck off the kitchen. It has nothing to do with the ADU itself.
Because the materials we have address the deck.
Okay, yeah, so the, the code does provide that a permit is required for interior modifications that, that create an accessory dwelling unit just so that the town can make sure parking is provided. So the actual construction of the ADU is not regulated. Just if you're creating one, you need a permit so that the town can make sure there's enough parking provided, if that makes sense.
So that is, that is the sort of the stipulation with respect to ADU. And I think there was at least one council member who, so do we consider this application for deck and ADU? Let me just clarify that first.
Well, for, for the convenience of the applicant.
Okay.
Probably nice to get everything done tonight, but, but then perhaps.
No, let's do that. That makes.
Neighbor, the neighbor sign-in sheet may not have include the ADU.
Well, we have one neighbor on this call, so as far as I know. Well, do we, so then it's only determining the driveway, the parking spot? That's all we need to, okay.
Correct.
Then can either the town manager or the engineer give us a view on that?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, Doug Lomire. In my report, I stated that the driveway is 100 feet long and there's room onsite to comply with the onsite parking AD requirements.
Great, thank you.
Is that your last question?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilor Rovak, do you have any questions?
I have no questions.
Mr. Town Manager, has any resident or guest indicated they wish to speak?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, now, Mr. Freeman, you have the opportunity for rebuttal or any additional information.
I think, I think everything's been addressed.
Okay, thank you. So this concludes the public portion of the hearing. The record is now closed. The council may now discuss and deliberate on the findings of fact and conclusions of law and may vote on the application. Mr. President, will you please lead the discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So appears that some of the information we have in our pre-council meeting package is, is not complete, but but the essence, essence of the information is all provided. A deck, creation of a deck and establishment of an ADU or some interior work. Let's just go around and see if any council members have any particular concerns or objections. Kabir?
No concerns or objections.
Robin?
Yeah, well, we're going to prove that the, the deck and the stairs without a problem. All the information is there. The neighbors have been notified. The issue is neighbors have not been notified about the ADU and are we concerned about that?
Well, I've been looking at the application. It appears that the applications doesn't describe how they're creating an ADU. So I believe the neighbors have been notified.
Your neighbor, is that fair?
Well, Mr. Town Attorney, weren't the neighbors notified of the ADU when per the county code, the applicant had to put a sign up on the site? I think, I think all that notice is provided for in the ADU law.
I don't have those facts, Mr. Mayor, as to what the applicant's done to date. But the town code requires permit applications to be shared with neighbors and the, the neighbor's sign sheet, signature sheet to be completed. So I think the question from the town's perspective is based on that permit application and that neighbor sign in sheet, were the neighbors notified of, of the scope of the project?
Right. And, and what I, thank you very much. And what I see in the applicant's package is a description of scope of work as follows. We are converting our basement into an approximately nine hundred and seventy five square foot accessory dwelling unit within the existing footprint of the basement. We're also renovating the first floor kitchen and adding a small deck off the kitchen. And that's what the neighbor signed off on.
Yeah, I, I think that's sufficient notice, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I think, I think it is. Under, under the way that our laws.
Great. Robin?
No, no further questions.
Okay. Debbie?
Nope, no further questions.
Shannon?
No.
Okay, it sounds like you're ready to make a motion. Councilmember Kumar, sounds like he's ready to make a motion.
Go for it, Kumar.
I, I, I'm not, but I'm, I'm happy to second anyone else's motion.
Okay, Councilmember Heller, are you ready to make a motion?
Okay. All right, I make a motion that we approve the permit for Josh Freeman, whose address I don't have offhand on Ballstone Avenue, right?
Five seven.
Five seven oh two Warwick.
Warwick, okay. And that we approve it. How's that?
With the condition.
Mr. Town Attorney, is that? What did she need to add?
I would just suggest with the condition that the applicant submit a copy of the Montgomery County landlord license for the proposed ADU prior to approval of the final inspection of the project.
That is what I meant to say.
Okay, good. And Councilor Kumar, you accept that, I assume. Okay, so discussion on the motion. Hearing none, all those in favor? All those opposed. Thank you very much. Congratulations, Mr. Freeman. The next item is the Building Administrator's Report. Mr. Lohmeyer.
A few items to go over. At forty nine hundred Cumberland Avenue, the town issued a building permit in December seventh, and again, that work has not begun yet. At the forty seven sixteen Essex, the council, they'll, they issued a building permit on July eighteenth for two additions at the rear of the existing house. At forty eight oh six Grantham, the applicant has applied for a variance to convert the existing carport into a garage and to construct a new front porch. Both proposed improvements encroach into the established building line setback, and the staff is reviewing the variance application. Fifty five oh two Greystone, town building permit was issued on July first for an addition on the right front of the existing house. And at fifty five ten Greystone, the town issued a building permit on just June eighteenth for some exterior work on the left front of the house. The permit for fifty five twenty two Uppingham was issued on July eighteenth. Work has not begun yet. And at fifty six thirteen Warwick, for the additions to the existing house, the town issued a, approved the plans, but the county has not issued their purbing permits, so that job is on hold. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Council President Circo, do you have any questions?
No questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Barr.
Slightly concerned over forty eight sixteen Essex Avenue. It seems to be lingering as empty for a rather a long time. Doug, do we have anything more than what you said in your report?
Yes, I called and spoke, I called and spoke to the homeowner about a month ago. And he says, my permit's good until December twenty seventh. And I said, yes, it is. And he said, then I'll get to it. And I said, well, do you have plans on when you get started? And he said, not at the moment. And that's all he gave me.
We've got no way we can try to encourage him to start.
I, I don't know whether he hasn't submitted a con, hired a contractor, what the deal is. He wouldn't give any more information than to say that his, his permit's still active and he'll get to it.
Hey, okay.
Do you, do you, um, maybe this is also a question to the town attorney. What authority does the town have in this area? Because it does have an impact on the resident's quality of life.
Does, yes.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, could you repeat the question? I was.
It's regarding the.
We, we have an empty house at forty eight sixteen Essex Avenue. It's been empty for some time. There is an owner who keeps saying he is going to start work on it, but he has not given a firm date yet.
So the house is vacant and the, the work to be construct, or the work to be performed is what?
Doug, do you, do you have, do you know the work?
Doug, do we know what the work is?
My, my question is basically, is it condemnable under, you know, county law? Is there, what's the, the public safety hazard, in other words?
Right, are there, are there problems? Go ahead, go ahead, Doug.
Can you give me the address again? Maybe I got confused. What was the address?
Forty eight sixteen.
Forty eight sixteen, it might be forty eight fifteen, actually.
I'm sorry, I got the wrong address. I'm sorry, I gave you the wrong information. Hang on a second. Yeah, that house has been vacant. I did, I'm sorry, I gave, I was thinking of another project. That house has been vacant for a while. I did meet with a architect about a year ago, but no plans have been submitted since. So I apologize for the confusion.
And I was just looking, in, in March, it looks like they had sent over some some updated drawings for us.
I think you're talking about forty eight sixteen, right, Councilmember Barr?
It is forty eight sixteen on here, yeah, that's the one.
That's Lila Snow's former house.
Yeah, I mean, the, the county has a, a process for, you know, condemning vacant properties that become public safety hazards.
And another thing is, Councilor Barr, are there any, do, do you think there are any violations there, such as, you know, they have to maintain the grass and all this other kind of stuff?
As far as I know, the grass has been maintained, but I haven't looked lately.
Because that, that's something that, you know, our inspectors can check out, and if necessary, they can ask the county if there's any kind of violation, but I don't think there's a law against leaving a house vacant.
Correct, Mr. Mayor.
But, but there could be violations if they're not keeping it up and, and. So, so well, thank you for raising that question, Councilman Barr. And we will make sure that, that we pay attention to this. Did you have any further questions?
No other questions, no.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Heller, do you have any questions?
Nope.
Thank you. Councilor Kumar.
I have one question. I had a similar question about five five zero six Trent, which was our first stormwater approved project. I'm wondering, in a couple of weeks, it'll be three months after the permit was issued. Wondering if I have an idea of when that will start.
Yeah, the landscaping contractors were out of earlier, last week, I guess, trimming back some of the trees so they can get into the site. And I've got a voicemail message into the contractor asking them when he's going to begin demolition.
A lot of times. I'm sorry, go ahead.
You'll get, you'll get a chance.
When we had the preconstruction meet, I'm sorry, when we had the preconstruction meeting, the contractor said they couldn't get into the site until the trees were trimmed. And we met with Tolbert and he gave them direction on how to do that. So that's been completed. So I'm hoping they're going to be in there either this week and next, but I'll find out.
Most likely, Pepco.
Hold on, Councilor, let's let Councilor Kumar finish.
No, I, I, I get, I get where you're going with that, Shannon. And so I appreciate that, Doug, and, and Shannon.
Do you have any further questions?
No more questions.
Okay, thank, now, Councilor Ravak.
Well, I was just going to say that in most situations, like, they really are depending on Pepco removing the electricity from the house before they can demo it. So in Pepco, as we may or may not know, can take a while to slot in their work. And so chances are likely they haven't had the power cut from the house yet. And then once that is done, it'll probably start fast.
Well, the, the Montgomery County requirement is they will not issue a demolition permit until Pepco, Washington Gas, and WSCC have turned off their utilities. So since they have a county permit, I'm a hundred percent sure Pepco's been ta, turned off already.
Well, they have to remove the wire from the house. And like, the people next door to me, they had a county permit long before they were able to start demolition because they had to wait for Pepco.
Well, I, I'll go ahead and check, but I'm pretty sure that a Pepco has been turned off.
Yes, Doug, maybe you can find out and get back to.
When I talk to the contractor, I'll ask him.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Ravak, do you have any further questions?
No.
Okay, thank you. The next item is public hearing motion to consider approval of a community program to develop town values and vision statement as recommended by the Equity and Inclusion Committee. Mr. Town Manager.
And this is something that we had discussed at a work session previously, and the council had kind of worked together to flesh out some of the follow-up questions for the committee and the committee chair to kind of give the council a better sense of exactly what this was intended to do for the town and where it might go from here. And in addition to the original proposal, the committee chair has submitted essentially a, a Q and a response sheet for the council. I know has been working with Councilmember Barr as well, so Councilmember Barr may also have some information to add on this, but I think the general, general plan is over the course of several months, get a group, a working group together that establishes sort of a guiding statement for the town on what its overarching vision is, long term, which can then help guide future priorities and help align with those visions and values.
Councilor Barr, did you want to add anything before I?
Right, yeah, I mean, we, there was, there was considerable enthusiasm for the idea and the process at the work session, but we had some questions about it. It is, the idea is to get an overall vision statement for the town, you know, what, what, what do we see as the center of our town's being? You know, that's, that's what the vision is about. And then from that, we derive values that are consistent with that vision, which then inform our policy development, our rule development, our, our programs. We, we had questions about was it really about inclusion? Because that was, that's, that's the Equity and Inclusion Committee doing this. The answer is no, it's not. The, what Atsko said was, we'd like to facilitate the development of a shared vision by the town and for the town. So they're helping develop this, but it's not particularly focused on equity and inclusion. It will be excluded, but it's not particularly focused on that. We also asked, what do they see as the value of this process for the town? What's the town going to get out of it? And we, we, Atsko responded, the exercise of developing the visions through the collaborative processes and any about coalescing community and bringing a set greater sense of cohesion and belonging is the answer. And that, it certainly does that when you've got companies doing the same thing, and I think probably would work well for town as well. How is it different from just a communal self-examination? And the answer is that this is forward-looking. Ultimately, the exercise is forward-looking, anchoring the town in a shared aspirations. Where are we going as a town?
Okay, thank, thank you. And, and I do want to, I personally want to applaud the committee's work and Councilor Barr's interest in this, because lots of municipalities across the country are doing this kind of self-examination so that they can consider. Actually, it is, it does, in my view, it does relate to inclusion and whether we are welcoming to people of all backgrounds and all income levels. So I, so I think this is outstanding. Council President Circo, do you have any questions?
No, I just want to say I really appreciate the effort. Thank you.
Councilmember Heller.
No, but I just want to thank Robin for all that he's done there. Thank you, Ron.
Councilmember Kumar.
I just have a mild concern. Sometimes when, you know, we pursue these things, we inadvertently become exclusionary, you know, and so I hope the process, I don't know what the process will be, but whatever the process is, is as inclusionary as possible, i.e. it, it, you know, involves people from all walks of life in this town and and it's not just the sort of extended friends and neighbors of the folks who are, you know, core to this effort, which outwardly ends up happening with committee efforts. So if you're taking something at this level for the town, I hope it'll, you know, be truly inclusionary and and all, that all depends on the process. So I suspect it will be, but just have a mild concern that we don't, we're not sort of focused on that. We may inadvertently exclude people as we move this forward.
Well, I think it's very valuable input, and perhaps it would be good if you discussed with the chair some of your, your concerns, because as you know, she's a professional in this area, and I'm sure she would appreciate your input, Councilor Kumar.
I think I could add also, I mean, the chair currently is in the Highlands of Norway, so she's not exactly accessible right now. But the, the there's a whole process that they described in the document, which is pages long, and I understand that. But it, it starts with council and committee chairs, but then there's a lot of advertising out to residents as a whole and getting feedback from residents, the whole is a part of the process. So she is really trying to reach the town as a whole. But you've got to start somewhere. It's going to start with council and committee chairs and go on from there.
Yeah, and, and hopefully all age groups, all walks of life. So I think it would be great if, if it goes in that direction, I think it will mean a lot more.
Okay, thank you. Did you have any other comments or questions? Okay, thank you. Councilor Roback, do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions.
Thank you. Mr. Town Manager, are there any comments or questions from a resident or guest?
No, no.
Okay, hearing nine council, are you prepared to make a motion?
I move we approve the vision and values process recommended to us by the Equity and Inclusion Committee.
I see, Council, Council President Circa seconded, is there discussion? Hearing nine, all those in favor?
Hi.
All those opposed, thank you very much. Our next item is public hearing motion to consider approval of Public Safety Committee Police Recommendations, Mr. Town Manager.
Yes, these were discussed at the council work session and are here for you again to adopt tonight. And I do note that we have Chair Vaswani here as well to answer any questions that you might have.
Chair Vaswani, do you wish to add anything to that? Did you, would you like to add anything to that, Mr. Chair?
But I think that that memo we sent to the council speaks for itself and these recommendations are really necessary because this program has really not had too much scrutiny or oversight for the last 15 years, I believe, and these recommendations are designed to introduce some transparency and accountability, and I will turn it over back to you or Councilmember Roback. Thanks.
Oh, Councilor Roback, did you want to say anything?
Um, no, I I mean, Kumar said said it all basically. I mean, these were developed by the Public Safety Committee as some recommendations is put into place so that we can really start looking at our policing program and, you know, what we're spending the money for. Um, we can have some transparency into it, like just this week, someone was like, the cop doesn't sit in front of my house anymore. Do you know what time that they work here? And I do not. Um, and so, uh, you know, these recommendations that are in place will help us move forward and be able to get some data as far as like what the policing program does and what 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 their duties are and what they think that, you know, we should be doing so that we can really frame a strategy around like how we want this policing program to move going forward. And until we know these kind of things, it's hard to do that from the Public Safety Committee standpoint. So I hope that we can adopt these tonight and start kind of moving forward so that we'll have some great data going in in the future months to help really kind of shape this program.
Thank you. And I and I don't want to be a broken record. I know I've said this over and over again. But when this program was instituted, there were no policies attached to it. So it is, it has been sort of rudderless all these years. And and I greatly appreciate the work that the committee's done, the chair and the liaison. And 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 we've gotten a lot of outstanding comprehensive memos, and I think the idea that came across at the work session, which I don't recall if the chair was there, but is that we need to I'm urging the council to put something in place to start and then we can build on that and the and if necessary amend. But it's really important to make this initial big step to show that that we really, you know, because we've gotten over the last 20 years, we've gotten lots and lots of complaints and valid input from from our residents, but we didn't really have an answer because we didn't, we didn't have a policy. So this is a great start. Council President Circa, do you have any questions?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I I agree with you completely. This is a great start. I'm I'm excited about it. I I think it's perhaps overdue because it's it's a not insignificant expenditure of town resources, $50,000 plus per year. And we really don't have the data on what the town is getting for it. I'm also hoping that we get some inputs or recommendations from the Public Safety Committee on what they recommend as objectives of this extra police service, extra police support. But as a first step, I think that the seven recommendations provided by the Chair of the Public Safety Committee on July 13th in his memorandum, July 13th of this year, as memorandum of the Town Council are are a great step, and I concur with the mayor's observation that we can adjust it as we go forward. I I know that the town manager has indicated some concerns that we may be overstepping the the bounds of what we should be expecting town Montgomery County Police Officers to provide in terms of information. And if that's the case, that's great feedback and we may need to adjust our program. But as a first step, I completely support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Barr.
I I support the seven recommendations, but I agree with Stephen with Hugh Jeffrey that we're going to have to amend them over time with experience. That's clear. And one of the things I'm certainly thinking about is that we should not develop police activity log independent of the police. So we should work with Sergeant Chung to basically come up with a reasonable police activity log that is useful and used by by the police officers. And there are other things like that.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Heller, do you have any questions?
I agree that we should adopt this. I also agree with Robin that when we create that log, it should be in concert with the police commissioner or whatever, Mr. Chow, whatever.
Only a sergeant, he's not a
I don't know. But no, I think we should do it.
That's Police Chief Chung, actually.
Police Chief Chung, I don't, I'm sorry. And no, I think I think it's time has come to create accountability. And so we can understand what's going on. And the question I have, though, is if if these police officers are off duty and working for us, then why can't we, then they're not working for the county at the same time, am I right?
No, they're not really off duty.
No.
No, because they have all, they have all the re, they they're they're just being paid by us because there's a, there's a, an agreement between the county and and, for example, us as a municipality that that we can, we're allowed to use them. And and it's an incredible bargain because we're paying a small amount and we get the card, the uniform and everything else. And 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 maybe the town attorney can elaborate on that, but it's really a misnomer to say they're off duty because if they, if they see a crime, they're on, they're they're basically on duty, but paid by us. Isn't it, is that, is that what you?
Yes, and I I withdraw my question.
Yeah, yeah, Mr. Mayor, they're secondarily employed by the town, but they're wearing their county uniforms. And if they witness a violation of state or county law, they're able to enforce it as a county police officer.
So maybe in our communication, we should in the future refer to them in that way, secondarily employed. Because I think that that the way we communicate to our residents about the use, I mean, it's to me, even though we haven't had policies in place, they are bound by the policies and procedures of the Montgomery County Police Department. So
And the collective bargaining
Right, and they're hired, you know, they're hired, they're trained. You know, we get, we get so many benefits for a small amount of money, even though we're spending a lot. We're getting a real bargain there. Okay, did you, is that, does that conclude your questions, Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Kumar.
I'm, you know, at the highest level in support of of a policy or a process to get to a policy overseeing this aspect of public safety because we haven't had one, I think, as Mr. Vaswani mentioned, for 15 years. So at the highest level, I'm in support of that. I just wanted to clarify a few things. One is that we added the police, we doubled the budget on request of the Public Safety Committee, if I'm not mistaken. You know, because, right, if that came from the
Traffic Committee, actually.
Yeah, it was, I'm sorry.
Traffic Committee, I think.
Traffic Committee asked for more police, not the Public Safety. Is it right, Sean? Okay. And then
Yeah, the bikes and I I believe that the bikes came from the traffic committee, right?
Uh, no, that was Public Safety, but Kumar
Let me just point out, let me point out again that the when the police were originally hired 20 years ago, it was for the, it was for traffic safety issues.
I see.
So maybe that's why the traffic committee happened to to
Make that recommendation.
Right, but anyway, it it's all good. Go ahead, go ahead with your
And then the the other is, you know, I appreciate that we need a policy, but I, you know, there's sort of an implied sense here that there's something not working well with the existing police. And that is not my impression, at least. And I just want us to be sort of self-aware of that, that we are not, this is not in response to some failure of the police that are serving us, right? This is not in response to negligence on their part or dropping the ball in any way. And I think that that would be a very important part of the communication. Because some of these memos, the tone is, makes me a little nervous, to be honest with you. It's it's very sort of, you know, litigious in in its nature. And I just want to be clear that we are not sort of saying you guys have been failing and we want to scrutinize you and start with the log and then you'll go from there. You know, right? That's not
Well, thank you for, but I think it's good that you put that on the record.
Yeah, but no one is questioning their competence or their dedication or diligence. I mean, this is just to provide like some structure and transparency and accountability and good governance moving forward that we just haven't had. And in the memo that I I think that it lists it like in the, in one of the top sections. Um, it does, oh, it's make no mistake, the Montgomery County Police are very well trained and very well screened, and the officers are professional, compassionate, and, you know, it talks about that. It it's more about, you know, it's not about them.
Got it. Perfect, perfect. And then lastly, sort of practically, you know, Matt, this is practically, this is not a challenge for us to implement. And it'd be great to hear from you if there are sort of practical challenges. I don't believe, I think in a work session, we came away, there might be some, but it's practically doable. And then I had a related question.
Why don't you let Matt?
Really, it's for Matt, a related question. You know, we have, we hear from the town engineer. We hear from Ron, we hear from Tolbert as part of various processes. We don't hear from the police. Would it help if we had an occasional council session where we heard from the police? Would that build more town confidence if they were visible once in a while at a council session?
I think that's
A related question.
I think it's a really good idea. So will the council president and I will try to integrate that on a more regular basis. I think that's a great idea. Anyway, Mr. Town Manager, do you want to answer those questions?
Yeah, no, I think I think to answer your second question, I I do think that the other municipalities around us that have similar secondary employment contracts with county police officers do regular, maybe quarterly or something to that effect of where they're sort of acting town chief or main liaison or whatever does come and do a quick presentation in front of the council. And Ron, Ron might be able to speak to that as well.
Yeah, I I agree. And just one cautionary note, Matt and I have already talked about this. Generally speaking, you don't want the officers' hours to become public knowledge, obviously.
That thought crossed my mind, actually. I I wondered about that, you know, so I'm I'm assuming we can, we can be careful on that front.
Yeah, you just got to be careful with respect to what public records you create because, you know, public records are generally subject to inspection under the Maryland Public Information Act.
Yeah, I mean, it might serve as well that we don't always know where they're going to patrol, you know.
Well, that's why we have our town attorney to scrutinize all our documents.
But Matt, on the practicality of this log system?
Yeah, I mean, I I I agree with Councilmember Barr and Councilmember Heller that said it, it probably makes sense to talk with the officers themselves about what's practical and what's an easy and feasible way to track that information. There's some very specific recommendations in this memo, for example, creating a pie chart every month that, you know, I I can create a pie chart on Excel. So that is certainly doable.
You could also do a bar chart. I think it would matter.
Yeah, um, you know, I I don't know that expecting it to be as robust as Chevy Chase Village will turn out to be a very realistic expectation, just because they have an entire police department and a quite a, as I understand it, comprehensive program that runs their their tracking and all of that information when I spoke to their chief over there. But certainly, I mean, taking sort of basic information on what, when they're in town and general information about what they're doing when they're in town and what they're observing, whether they gave out tickets, those are that certainly information that I think could be useful and can can track, yeah.
I'm just going to put this out there, and this is my last statement, and we can move on, Mayor Slaven, which is, would it be better to have the process Ron described where they come every quarter and update the council? And it's in a standard format and and then we can make it, you know, we'll, we'll have a public notice around it, residents can attend, ask questions. Then the activity log system, which could inadvertently go public, could potentially jeopardize the very work we want them to do. I I don't know.
Well, I think that's, I I I think it's a question for Ron whether that should be institutionalized in a document for for Yeah.
Well, a possibility Matt and I discussed is you could have a log that shows hours worked, but, you know, maybe not specific days and times of the day. And, you know, to avoid someone misusing that information by trying to develop a pattern to know when to commit a crime. Also, it might be worthwhile, worthwhile reaching out to some of the other managers to see how they're doing it. I I think, for example, that, as Matt noted, in in Chevy Chase View, I think the manager or maybe one council member makes the deployment decisions. And so that person or persons know when deployments are taking place.
See, Councilor Kumar, you might want to consider tonight amending the document when the council takes it up. I want to take some of this out so there could be
I was thinking of going one level up, saying that we maybe pass something that says we instruct the town manager to develop a policy. And then all of this becomes part of that process, you know, and instead of us getting into the details of this memo and
Well, why don't you bring that, why don't you bring that up when you're debating?
Exactly, exactly, exactly. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Roback, do you, do you have any further questions or comments?
Um, well, I mean, this has been in the talks for quite some time and about developing, I mean, this is not new to this month, like this has been behind the scenes being worked on for quite a while. And, you know, the police activity log has been used in the past and it just hasn't been filled out, like it looks like the the last log entry was April 7th. So that's like over three months ago. So we don't have like anything since then. And, you know, it's just, again, this is like a a way to set up the program so that we can start kind of putting some some processes in Some processes in place that we can move forward with, um. And get some of the stuff that we're talking about here done, really.
Can I ask a quick clarification there? But the log already exists. We just want them to file it more regularly.
Well, it it it's not, it's not that straightforward. First of all, the log exists, but it's owned by a sergeant. Who used to work in town but no longer works in town, so it can't be modified except by going through this guy who's got no more relationship to Somerset. Um, secondly, it's not working, that that log. So the question is, can we design a better log that is owned by the town? That is working through the police with them, that will in fact get more regular entries in it.
And that that is your read of this memo?
And in part of it, it says like on the second part or whatever, um, for that section. It does say, because of issues brought to our attention by Sergeant Chung, the town's lead police officer, the town should start a new police activity log. But it has, it has been done in the past, it's not a new new, you know.
Okay, thank you. I see, now we turn to the uh. Comment period, I see the chair has raised his hand, sir. Chair Vaswan.
You actually muted yourself.
Sorry. Uh, I thank the council for devoting time to this, I wanted to just clarify a couple of things. You, the doubling of the budget was mentioned, that took place in fiscal year twenty twenty, so it started July uh. In July two thousand nineteen, when the. Budget was doubled at the request of the traffic committee, uh, so that was even before the public, the current public safety committee existed. Regarding the log, uh. Our, the recommendation. Labeled number one in our memo simply asks the town to go back and start doing what it had already been doing. That log has been used since twenty eighteen and even before twenty eighteen, there was a. Another log that was being used, I can share it with you, it's on my screen right now and I can show you that it was being used. It was showing dates and times that police officers worked, locations where they worked. And uh, that was made public. In a chat by the traffic committee chair. So that information is out there, the link is out there, anybody can look at it now. Uh, and in fact, the traffic committee chair made a number of statements to the public and to the residents back in twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen. Detailing how this log was to be used. She specifically said it would show times and dates where, in intersections. Where the police were monitoring violations. Uh, so I just wanted to put that out there, there are significant gaps in it, there's a six-month gap, there's a couple three-month gaps and. And they were using it up until April seventh, I don't know why. It was decided to stop filling that log in, but in any event. Uh, regarding that pie chart, and I don't want to get too fixated on a pie chart, but. There is software out there that, uh, and those of you who have lawyers in your family or who are, you know. Friends who are lawyers will tell you, that's the the business model for how. Law firms work, it's based on, you know, tracking six-minute intervals and there's software out there, there are apps out there that can do that. Uh, it will take Matt a little bit of time to set it up, but I can guaran- almost guarantee you, it'll take less time than it took to set up your QuickBooks. System, and once it's set up, it's very, should be very easy for the. Officers to fill that in just with a few taps on their phone. Um, and so that software is available. Uh, I don't think it will be a burden for the officers. Regarding the actual times that they worked, I mean, I think. You know, it's something that's gonna have to be worked out, obviously, but at least the. Public Safety Committee needs to know retrospectively. What days and times they worked, because it's important to know whether working, whether they're working. Nighttimes versus daytimes, school opening hours or school closing hours, weekends versus. You know, weekdays, so that really is needed by the PSC to determine. How this program's working, how it can be improved in the future, and I'll just leave it at that, thank you. Oh, uh, can I just say one thing about the manual? I appreciate the need to have a manual and to have. Uh, procedures. But in listening to the November uh. Twenty twenty-one work session video. That task was actually assigned to the uh, town manager to do. And one of our items is to simply ask the PSC to ask the town manager for an update on that. I would really prefer if the council didn't. Wait for these instructions to be put into a manual, because we start, we need to start gathering the data soon. So we can understand how this program's working, I don't know how long. It's gonna take the town manager to do that manual, and so. I mean, my preference, and obviously it's up to the council, is that the council vote on these tonight and implement them soon, so we can get started on this.
I have a question for Mr. Lasman.
Go for it.
What, what do you hope this data will show?
I think it will show initially how this program is working and.
What do you mean by working? Exactly, just like.
Show us how the officer's time is being allocated, because right now we don't know. If they're patrolling the town, if they're sitting stationary at specific intersections, if they're giving. Tickets, making traffic stops, if they're doing house checks or anything right now, we don't know that.
I, it's, what what we want, I think what the town wants to give direction to the police. Uh, in terms of what we want them to do. You know, it was originally that they were supposed to be traffic police and they were supposed to monitor for. Stop sign violations, originally speeding, they can't do speeding, but stop sign violations. That doesn't seem to be all that we want them to do now. So I think we should restate what we want the police to do, and that should be part of the manual, actually, in terms of what is the town's purpose in bringing police in, what are we trying to?
Well, that that's a different thing, you're saying.
Yeah, in the beginning. It it was never put into policy anywhere why we hired them.
Well, we need to do that.
Right, and so, yes. They observe it, but.
They, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Uh, just to clarify, did we tell them you're hired just to monitor traffic?
No, we, it was. Maybe we told one or two of them, it it was, it was, there was no, you, the only one that was around then was me. And, and the idea came up because people were. Cars were speeding through stop signs. Speeding through stop signs, and then when it turns out that the police started giving warnings to our residents, people didn't like it. Cause all the speeding and stop sign violations. Seventy-five percent of them were residents. And, and, and there were a lot of people that were opposed to having police here because. They they felt it was the beginning of a gated community or a police state.
Yeah, I I mean. I I appreciate what Robin is saying, you know, maybe we have to flip this, we can start with what we want from the police.
But I mean, right now, like, you know, they obviously spend their time doing something. So, you know, is it that they, you know, a resident came up to them and asked them to help them get a cat down from a tree? I I don't know, um, is it that they made, you know, fifteen stops on people who blew through Dorset and right before school? And talked to them, I I don't know.
But what will we do when we know that?
Well, we will at least know what, you know, we can, we can engage in a dialogue with with Sergeant Chung and see like what. You know, what do they think is the most effective use of their time? Um, you know, what are the activities that they do, you know, that are more helpful, maybe it's patrolling around by the pool at certain hours. I I don't know and I can't really answer that, for us to say like, hey, we think that you should um, be patrolling. School year, right around the time when the kids are in and out of school, that's one thing. We could be saying, you know, watch for speeders, that's another thing, we could say drive around at night and, you know, have a little bit of a presence, that's something else, like. We just don't really, like, I don't think that, you know, what Kumar is saying is that the Public Safety Committee and, you know. The history of this program, we really just have never set anything in place um, before, and so we're still, we're paying for this now. And so now we're trying to get a little more clarity into the program itself so that. We can start making recommendations, but until we know, you know, like, what they spend their time with. You know, it's hard to say like, oh, well, do this and just walk the streets now, or I I don't even know what to say really about it, but. That's part of the whole process that we're going through at this point.
Now to to talk to the sergeant in charge directly, to understand where they are spending time and. You know, like, we 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 want to go in with the data, is is basically what we are saying.
Wanted to say something, and I think that Chair Vaswan, he wanted to say something, to answer your questions. Go ahead, Mr. Town Attorney, you're muted.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to note in case all the council members weren't aware, maybe you are aware. The secondary employment of the officers is governed by collective bargaining agreement. Entered into between the county and the Fraternal Order of Police. And in a nutshell, it provides that officers are basically allowed to act as security guards. They're allowed to arrive in their uniforms and. Squad cars, they're not allowed to patrol. They're basically allowed to set up surveillance points, so you could not, for example, ask the officers. To drive around the whole town during their whole shift, that would be generally. A potential violation of the collective bargaining agreement. The the bargaining agreement, well, I I should say, I haven't looked at it in a couple of years, I think I last looked at it in twenty seventeen, so it. May be different now, it's probably something we should take a look at. But it provides in certain circumstances, you can ask that they take. Targeted traffic control at certain intersections and, you know, ask them to set up surveillance points here and there. But not that they patrol around the town during their whole shift, as I understand.
But do you know them what to do? Uh, within those constraints?
Right, yeah, and. Surveillance in nature, basically, and then and if they witness a violation of law. In their security surveillance role, they're allowed to enforce that law that they witnessed being violated.
Okay.
So, Mr. Town Attorney, you're comfortable with the document that is proposed, correct?
Oh, well. I haven't reviewed the the proposal, Mr. Mayor. Issued on Friday. Yeah, I mean, I, I've had some general discussions with Matt about what I think is appropriate in a policy, but I haven't reviewed this one line for line.
Well, I. Based on that, I'm not sure that it would be appropriate for the council to. Um, consider that if the town attorney hasn't reviewed it.
Sorry, so, so, Mr. Mayor? Th- this is a document that takes back three weeks from the chair of our Public Safety Committee. In a town council work session, in attended, that was attended by our town attorney. Um, if he has any issues or concerns, I'd like to hear them, otherwise, I'd like to move ahead with this. We, we've been waiting for years to get something in place, we're spending more than fifty thousand dollars a year. On police that I gather now are just allowed to be security guards watching something from the corner, we need data. We need to have a policy in place, and this is just the first step. That, sorry, that's my opinion.
Okay, okay, so right now we are still in the public comment period, so. Let me give the chair one last comment and then I will turn it over to the council president to lead the discussion. Chair Vaswan.
Yes, thank you, um. I, I thank the council again for their time, this is actually something that probably deserves about a two or three hour discussion and. You know, so, uh, but just to go back to a couple of points made earlier. Chevy Chase Village Police, I'm sure they are very precise and. Well, precise about how they assign their officers to various duties and they still track the time, they still track the percentage of time. That they're spending on each duty and each month they publish a pie chart, now, you know, maybe we don't have to do it every month, but, you know, maybe two months would be okay, but. Yeah, they still do this as a matter of public transparency. Uh, and even if you are assigning specific tasks to officers, I think you have to verify. That after the fact, the second issue is. Uh, as it's been. Made clear before, this is just a start and we're kind of in the uncomfortable position, if you were designing this program from the start. You'd take as much time as you needed to create a policy and. Rules and regulations, and I think we need to do, do that eventually, but. We're already flying the plane now and we have to fix it as we're flying it, and as it was noted, we're spending a thousand dollars a week on this program. And we really just need to know at this point, you know, how the officer's time is being spent. What their activities are, stops, tickets, warnings, whatever, we don't have that information. And so we really need to start that now, while we work on, you know, a long-term policy, but that's all I wanted to say, thank you.
Thank you, and again, thank you for the incredible amount of work that you've done on this and, and uh. I know council members have spent hours reading your memos, but. In the long run, it will all benefit the town. And with that, I will turn it over to the council president to lead the discussion. And to remind everyone that the town attorney is avail- still available for questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. The the first observation I wanted to make for my colleagues and any residents who are. Uh, participator listening in is. Now, we're not talking about defunding the police here, we have. A very active Montgomery County Police Department, um, providing. Protection, security, support throughout the county, what we're talking about here is additional. Police monitoring, surveillance and support activities within the town, provided by. Um, Montgomery County Police Officers working extra hours. And I think it makes, from my perspective, it makes. Great sense to have more insights into what they're doing, and I have no particular concerns about. Publishing historic hours of historic data on hours and locations that they happen to be located. I I I I think the idea that. Uh, criminals are gonna use this information to figure out when to conduct nefarious activities. Is um, is erroneous, certainly the historic data shows that criminal activity has occurred when we have had this additional. Police presence on site. So anyhow, I I I think we really need to start the process of having a, a more. Data-informed and transparent uh, police service within the town. So those are my thoughts, and I'd like to go around, uh, Debbie, what are some of your thoughts or comments?
I agree with everything you just said, and I I just think it's time to. Uh, to have more accountability, so we really understand what we're paying for. And is this, and and was, what we're doing, is it what we want? Does it make sense for us? You know, and so I think this is simple. You know, I I don't see this as a, as a big, as a big deal, we're just, you know, trying to figure out a way to get more accountability, and I think the Public Safety Committee. Has done a great job in 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 thinking this through and giving us suggestions, so thank you, Kumar, you've done a fabulous job. I read your memo and I thought it was really good, so thank you, so let's move on with this already.
Great, thank you, Debbie, uh, Robin?
Yeah, I I let, I mean, I agree that we should pass these recommendations. One point, though, is that as Matt implements them, he is welcome to come back to us to say this needs more clarification.
Absolutely.
You should understand that.
Well, if I, if I may, I I guess I, I am a little bit confused just because. I, I don't feel that I have very clear instructions to give to the police on what they should do. And so I. It, I, I'm a little bit. Uncomfortable, I guess, judging them based on what activities they report they're doing without them having any sense. Of what they're supposed to be doing from us. without them having any sense of what they're supposed to be doing from us. If we have certain ideas of what they should be doing. For instance, you know, the, the Public Safety Committee had recommended several budget amendments to improve community policing. You know, I, I don't know if that's a, so I don't know what that necessarily means, but I don't think that I have enough information on my own to be able to give them that information.
I think there, there are two pieces to this. One is that's past the recommendations, which doesn't actually, they don't contain anything on, um, how we should direct the police, what we think they should be doing. That's not what these recommendations are on. Um, but they still need some clarification. I think you are going to have to come back with us regardless. But I think the council should get on our agenda soon. Exactly what do we expect our police to do for us? What are we looking for from our police? And have that direction given to you once we've done that.
All right. Thank you, Robin. Matt, can you clarify which of the seven or more than one of the seven recommendations you're referring to that causes you concern? I, I, I don't think any of them direct you to direct the police in terms of their activities.
I'm not su, I'm not sure I know how to answer that question, I guess. I guess my point, my point more is that the way, uh, the way this sort of is being set up is that we need this information on what they're doing so that we can determine whether or not this money is worth spending. And I think it's a better practice to decide what we want to spend the money on first. Instead of spend the money, ask them what they're doing with our money and then judge them based on that.
I don't, I don't think that anyone is suggesting that we are gonna be like stopping this program, you know, based on, on these seven recommendations. I mean, by any stretch of the imagination. It's just to try to, um, to get some, some good data points that we can then have the P, the Public Safety Committee kind of coming up with what we should be doing with the police. I don't think, you know, they're, they're in the budget. And, um, we just want to make sure that, um, you know, as we're writing forward, what we think that they should be doing, like, does that even include things that they're currently doing? Or what does Sergeant Chung think that they should be doing? And I think that that's all a collaboration to help design what this policing program does look like. But I don't think anyone's suggesting that, you know, the police filling out this activity log is gonna say, oh, well, we don't need them anymore. Bye, you know, I, that's at least my view on it. I think it's just a way, we're kind of like circling right now. And, um, we don't know what they do, so we don't, we're uncomfortable telling them what to do because we don't know what they do. And, you know, it's just going around, in my opinion.
Right, and it's been going around for years. Uh, thank you, Shen. And, and, and thank you, Matt. Kabir, do you have any thoughts, comments to add?
I see Ron has his hand up.
Oh, okay.
So, Ron? Would love to hear.
Making sure I wasn't muted. To Matt's point, recommendation number five says there should be a policing policy created. I don't know if Matt's suggesting he's not sure what to include in such a policy. What are the priorities for the council? I'm happy to address number six, town's liability for its program. Number seven, providing any resolution ordinance, policy, regulation, et cetera, that may have a bearing on recommendations. Again, I
Actually, not a new recommendation. That was in fact a direction to Matt back in November. But Matt, Matt is pointing out a problem that he doesn't have the information he needs to build the policy. And that, that gets back to us, the council, to give him guidance on that.
Exactly. And, and if I may interject, number five states the town council should request that the town manager provide the council with a briefing on his effort to create a policing policy as assigned to November 15th, 2021 council work session. So we're not asking for the policing policy, we're asking for his effort. What is, what is our town manager's plan to develop a policing policy? And that plan could very well include a request for recommendations from the Public Safety Committee, a request for legal analysis from the town attorney, a request for feedback from the Montgomery County Police Officers. We're just looking for a plan. And number six, the town council should ask the town attorney to assess the town's liability for its police program, which is a great item, but it's, it's separate from Matt's comment about not sure how to proceed, I believe.
And then furthermore, you know, number seven is the council should provide the PSC with any resolution ordinance, policy, regulation, rule, guidance, or other document that describes the town's police program. I think that we have all kind of come to the conclusion that we really don't have any document or anything like that in place, right?
And the county collective bargaining agreement will, will be very important documents to
So, you know, I mean, I think that, you know, the Public Safety Committee has been asking for things that we just don't have. And so, you know, again, this is a way to kind of start setting up the framework so that we can move forward um, with, uh, I don't, I don't want to say 2.0 police policy, but, you know, ultimately, the goal is to, um, you know, really relook at this, at the program and have a policy moving forward so that everyone is on the same page.
Right, right. Thank you, Shen. Kabir, uh, you sort of turned over to Ron, but what are your thoughts or comments?
Yeah, he, he has, he had his hand up. You know, we spend less than, if I understand the numbers correctly, less than $3 per household per week on this policing program. You know, and, and if it's serving as a deterrent, you know, we will never know, right? That's part of patrols in town. They deter things from happening. You will never know if that has actually worked. So as I said earlier, I don't have any reason to question the competence and the effectiveness of how the police have behaved in town. I, I, my direct experience, as I mentioned at the working session, has been very positive in an incident that was deeply troubling and problematic, and it was extremely positive in dealing with the, the police in town, the, our own, you know, secondarily employed police in town. So it seems cost-effective, seems that there hasn't been any issues that I've heard of. My direct experience have been very positive. But I appreciate Steve, and you've been on the council longer, so I would put the question to you. Why haven't we had a policing policy, frankly, all these years? And so, you know, I think having one totally made sense, um, you know.
Well, let me answer that. One of the reasons we haven't is because we haven't had an effective Public Safety Committee. It was dormant. Remember, it was, it was Public Safety Committee was defunded. And now, thanks to this council, the Public Safety Committee has been re-energized. And we, we had Bruce Tully bring us back into the world. And then we had Kumar Vaswani take us to this level. So.
So I'm seeing that I'm fully in support of it. Yeah, if it hasn't happened for a reason, so be it, but I'm fully in support of it happening now. I remain, I have similar set of concerns to what Matt said. I'm concerned that we don't have a write-off from Brad fully on this and some questions he's written. And I just want all of you to be aware of that. Matt is often not someone who, you know, is often willing to work with us on all aspects. And so I, I, I tend to listen closely when he's raising questions. And, but I, I'm trusting all of you that you think this will be a huge stepping stone in the direction of developing
I also think, as we pointed out from the beginning, that let's move forward with something and the Public Safety Committee will make immediate, I know they'll get right to work on making recommendations to address all the concerns that the town attorney has and that Matt has, but I, but, you know, it's been the inaction of all of us that we haven't had this until now. So let's move it forward. We're all to blame.
Okay, we adopt the seven, move that we approve the seven recommendations the Public Safety Committee has.
Second.
Okay, is there discussion?
Well, I've just, brief, 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 I just like to add one comment that another reason why this issue has lingered is, is historic. And it dates back to when I first joined the council about, I don't know, six years ago. And the thrust was just how many hours of police coverage could we get? And it was a struggle to get police to come to the town. We just wanted the hours. And we had a different town manager. And I think we now have a more professional town staff and organization. And we have a Public Safety Committee. And I think that working together, we have the, the opportunity to, to, to guide the police force to provide the type of, uh, police protection and public safety that we're looking for moving forward into the future. I, I just didn't want, so I just don't want there to be any criticism of, of Matt and what we're talking about here. I think, I think we're in a good position now.
Okay, is there further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
I.
All those opposed. Thank you, everybody. Good job. Now we will move to our final item, the town manager's report.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Um, sorry, uh, I accidentally just closed my tab, so bear with me for just one moment. So we have several major projects that are, that are in the works this year. And we've, we've laid out sort of an ambitious uh, budget year for us as well. And so, um, I've given some updates on, on those projects for you. The, you know, one of the big ones is the pool. We, we discussed that a little bit earlier this evening. Uh, so I, I know that that's perhaps even tentatively something we'll discuss as soon as later this week. So, um, perhaps won't get into the weeds too much on that. I think the big, the big question is going to be, are we just gonna do the concrete on top and then some, some more minor repairs underneath that? Or are we going to, in one fell swoop, since we're getting under there anyway, replace the piping and that whole system? If we replace the piping system, there's probably not enough of a window between even Labor Day and winter, basically, to, to do that work. And so most of the concrete pouring, things like that, would be held off until the spring. If we only do the concrete work, we could do it this spring. It is a very tight window, just in terms of making sure that we're at the right temperature. The leaves aren't causing too much of an issue and that then we don't get into the weather being too cold. So if we only do the concrete, Rob from American Pool had sort of indicated that even as they are finalizing any permitting, which probably wouldn't come until the very beginning to possibly even mid-September, there's enough stuff that they can ramp up to get going. If we closed on Labor Day, they could get in there Tuesday and start doing things. As Matt Zapp said, you know, one of the other things he said is we could potentially push it back a week. Um, it, it would be an even tighter squeeze. And then again, if we end up doing this piping work, then even though there's more work, uh, there's potentially a window in there because the concrete pouring doesn't happen until spring. Conversely, we could try to get the work done in the fall. If it was a small enough work, then open early in the spring. That would be another potential option. If we're doing all of it, that's probably not gonna happen either. The, the other, uh, point of caution, I guess, that we had talked about and that probably won't know for sure until we get this second opinion on it. But, uh, we should all sort of keep our fingers and toes crossed, I guess, that the pool basin itself remains in good shape. About seven years ago, we did some core sampling and there were no, no problems. Rob has recommended that we do some work on, uh, some work on sort of the surface of it, just to ensure that it stays in good shape. But, um, if that is the case, that opens up a whole new can of worms in terms of permitting, in terms of costs, in terms of just the scope and the length of the work that, um, could and almost certainly would extend it into even the pool opening the, the following year. That would be a major, 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 uh, production. Um, uh, a few other, uh, infrastructure plans. Um, with the streets, I've, I've drafted a roadway master plan, RFP. I got some documents from MML and, um, did some research to try to put it together and submit it for Doug to take a look at it. I figure since we have an engineer on, on staff, basically, that might as well take advantage of that and make sure that there aren't any technical corrections that he would recommend for that. But the plan is to get that out sooner rather than later so that we can start with the work this fall, hopefully, um, even if we don't complete it until the spring, so that we have a sense of when it comes to budget, budget season, which, you know, it's, it's August now and we're thinking the budget doesn't happen for seven months, but it, it, it gets here faster than, than it seems. And so even three months from now, we're gonna be starting to think about putting together preliminary numbers for the budget. And so hopefully, this will put us in a place when, when the mayor's putting together his, his five-year plan and we're putting in the budget for next year, we have a sense of what streets are we going to prioritize? And how are we going to do them, um, in order? Probably not realistic to think that we're going to repave the entire town all one year. Um, and I, I don't, and I think as we had, as we have discussed in, in budget, I don't think that our roads are in such terrible shape that we need to immediately tear, tear them all up. But we do need a plan moving ahead to start thinking about that. And, um, the other part of that that I've included is an entire sort of roadway. And I, 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 I kind of tried to use that in as, uh, as broad a terms as possible to include the entire pedestrian networks, the sidewalks, curbs, gutters, everything like that. And I think that, along with some of the signage work that we've done, potentially even some of the pool, uh, testing and data that we get, uh, I've included an optional element of the, of the RFP to help us put together a GIS, uh, program for our town that can help with long-term planning, help with, uh, the quality of, of our streets and putting that, that information in place. It can also help us with, uh, stormwater data in the future in terms of housing, building coverage on, on lots and setbacks. And I, I think it could have a lot of spillover positive effects that might be worth considering investing in. Another, another one that it could potentially help is with streetlights, too. And making sure that we have a system of where our streetlights are, especially if we think longer term about putting in and installing additional, uh, poles in places where we might have some gaps in lighting. Um, but right now, we're, I, I've met twice in the past month with Pepco. Um, most recently, just this past Friday, and have another meeting scheduled for this Friday. They were able to provide us with their lights that they keep. And I, I, I think every small step we're taking in this progress, uh, process, it seems to make, it seems to confirm our sense that going with the standard offering from Pepco makes the most sense for us. That cost-wise, it should, it should be the most affordable. And then in case of replacement now and in the future, it also is a much easier procurement process and, um, reporting process if, if things go out. A, a meeting on Friday with two of the guys that are supposed to be able to get us some better information on pricing. So we can start to think about the budgeting aspects of it. So we can start to think about the budgeting aspects of it. Of course, we we have budgeted money in this year's, in this year's fiscal budget. Pepco's indicated that we could essentially split the job up into thirds or smaller if we wanted. And take a crack at it once every eight to 10 weeks. So. I think realistically, that that probably means we could do maybe half, maybe even get in two-thirds of the town. This this fiscal year and then plan to hopefully then finish it next year. And the good news is, I was able to confirm that the the lights that Pepco is offering are the 3,000 Kelvin temperature lights. Which are. Lower than the four, 4,000 that are better for kind of highways and roadways and more suitable for residential areas. What we're gonna end up doing is narrowing it down to two different options and checking out a couple of. Pieces of information to make sure we make the right selection. One is two different options on the wattage. So one would be based on the current wattage of most of our streetlights. And then another, which would be the next step up, which might help with darker spots. And just making sure that it's better illuminated. And then the other thing that it will help us with is at the intersections themselves. Are we picking the right lights with the right light distribution? Is it shining the right way, basically? So, yeah, again, I'm meeting, I'm meeting with them on Friday, should get a little bit more clarification on some of the costs and billing associated with that project. After that meeting and then the following week, tentatively have a a site. Me, a site visit scheduled with them to go over locations for a pilot. This past week, the LIDC met with a few residents in that Dorset. Dorset, Essex, Warwick, Surrey.
Mini watershed.
Square, which was the, the, one of the micro, yes, micro, micro mini watersheds that that LIDC had. Had identified in their report. I I haven't had a chance today to check in with Ellen Globacar or Julie Greenberg. From the committee to to sort of see how that went out. But I I think tentatively, the committee has. Sort of identified that as maybe the number one area that they're targeting to put together a proposal for the council. To possibly invest in some private. Private mitigation. Town private partnership deals. Bless you. Another less sort of major, but still sort of exciting and and big project is the solar panels. I I did draft an RFP. And Councilmember Barr actually has helped me a little bit with that as well, so. Hopefully should be able to put that out to bid soon to have somebody selected this fall to then start with that. I mentioned a couple of other kind of maybe step down in terms of scope of projects. Some town hall repairs and improvements of the the railing here and some. Chairs to make the outdoor front porch a nice sort of meeting area for people and to be able to. Host people out there more easily. I'm I'm waiting for finalized study on the pool parking lot. I'd enumerated a few of their recommendations that the, that they followed up with based on some site observations. And I think that these are some things that we could maybe implement for next pool season. Also had, have ramped up some talks with. The Groundsmith Collective people to help us put together. We had, we budgeted money basically to do. What we did at the Dorset Wisconsin entrance and kind of beautify the rest of the town and create kind of a cohesive. Look for welcoming people into Somerset. And so I think we'll be able to to do that. Several other smaller projects, including. The, but still very important, one being the audit. I uploaded just last week our trial balance and our final numbers to the auditors, so. We'll work with that and then inevitably, there there will probably be some tweaks, but I think the plan will be in. Hopefully, November, they can come and give a formal presentation for the council on where we ended up with all of our numbers. And any, any other things that come out of those, that report. The only other thing that I'll highlight right now, and then I will, of course, be happy to answer any questions is. The code enforcement officer. Have put together a couple of job descriptions to kind of broaden the. The pool of applicants that we might get and I've sent a draft. To the Public Safety Committee to offer any recommendations on that as well. With that, I.
Much for that outstanding report. Council President Serk, do you have any questions?
No questions. Thank you very much for that report, man.
Thank you, Councilor Barr.
Yeah, two questions and two different things. Obviously, the 500,000 extra expense money was shocking. What you're saying in essence is that that is optional for us, that we can go with the work that we were originally going to do. The question is, how long are the pipes gonna last if we chose to choose not to replace them now?
Yeah, that's right. So the. I've even had, I I've tried to go back to our records to get a sense of when our pipes were last changed. I, the only thing that I've been able to determine is that they're not our original pipes, which means.
Been replaced once at least.
Which means they've been replaced at least once, which could mean anywhere from, you know, mid 1980s to. 15 years ago, probably not 15 years ago. I think we would have, we would know that, but you get my point. I think the the concern is that. We could spend $270,000 repairing the deck this year. But then the pipes only have 10 more years left in them. And so that, that's sort of the calculation that we will have to figure out is. Is it worth doing these imminent deck, these deck repairs that are imminent and needed now? If if 10 years from now, we're gonna have to tear it all up again to then replace the pipes. There's no way to get to the pipes without tearing up the deck. And there's a couple of other things that. Rob had suggested and talked about that the pool kind of, the deck warps over time. So the deck is, you know, going on 60 years old in some parts of it, so it's warped. So there are some parts where they filled in the. And now I'm, I I don't, I'm blanking on the vernacular, but there's parts, there's parts of the pool edge, basically. That have been installed to fit the warped pool deck. So do we also? Go in and put in the pool deck in a purposefully warped way to match the the edges of the. So there's, there's some, some of those types of. Yeah, calculations. But yes, I agree, it's, it it it, it could force us to. Take a look at our, our, our budget, you know. In a much more scrutinized way.
Yeah, right. I mean, one, one of the recommendations of the Revenue Committee comes to me at the moment, which is the one to set up a a gift fund. Basically, because we may have to find ways of raising money beyond just our, our revenue to cover what could be major expenses there. But so that's down the line, it's just something to think about. The other thing is the roads and. Some of the streets now, the curb is disappearing because we just keep layering up the next layer of roadway. Well, at some point, we're gonna have to scrape up those layers and start again in essence. When is that point is questioned?
Yeah, that's, that's definitely one of the questions. I mean, Cumberland, right here in front of the town hall is one of the areas where that's. Where that's very evident. I suspect that part of it is underneath the asphalt. We have a layer of concrete and we've just layered some asphalt above concrete. And again, just guessing that because Drummond has concrete streets one, one block up from us. I think that core sampling is, is going to be part of this RFP to, to get a sense of what the materials are. What kind of shape they're in and and then trying to prioritize which streets need the work and. You know, curbs and gutters have an effect on, on stormwater as well as the roads themselves. And so getting their advice on. How, how to, how to fix those or what our best path forward is certainly gonna be valuable information. I know, you know, one option is. Ron may be able to speak to this, but I think the town of Chevy Chase might have even. Tried to build up in some areas to match the raised curbs. And I think that caused some issues, so I I think. I think we, we probably. Will be best off eventually, yeah, taking off, scraping off the layers and trying to to get it to the. The thickness that's, that's more common practice, but we'll wait, wait, I guess, and see from, from them. I think the plan is, I think, like I said, I would like to have the bid out there for at least a month. To to give people time to apply for it and then. Another couple of weeks to interview some applicants and get a sense of how they would perform and pick out who the right person is. I think what I've sort of targeted is to have on the October agenda, a recommendation for a contractor. So that they can get started in October, November.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Haller. Do you have any questions?
Yeah, I wanna go back to the pool and the pipes and how do, how are we gonna figure that out? Do we have an independent person coming in to say? You know, you got pipes, so you got, because to do, to do the deck and then have to do the pipes. Not long down the road is ridiculous, because we're just gonna have to redo what we did on the deck. So I just, I guess there are a couple of questions. One, who's gonna make that assessment? Two, as part of this assessment, the question I'd love you to ask is, at what point do we need a new pool? Is this 10 years down the road? Is this 20 years down the road? Because I know Little Falls built a new pool this year for about $2 million. And so I just wonder, where do we fall into? Like, when did they build their original pole? Was ours built in in 1970? Was it earlier than that?
I think it was 1966.
I, I think, you know, this is a question that I personally have been asking for 20 years. But I think that last year, we were talking about how there's new technology. That has been developed to analyze the pool. Remember when they had the, the building collapse in Florida? And we learned about new technology that can evaluate that kind of thing. Because we, we've always been told that there wasn't really any way to evaluate it, but I think there is now. So, so we have to leave this to Matt to find out.
And to answer your, your first question, Debbie, yes, we are getting some, Linda and I have. Found a, a pool inspection company that's going to come and do it. We've already paid a retainer for them. And so we're just, we're, we're trying to get them scheduled and booked right now and do it as soon as possible to begin that process. But that's the idea is to get a fresh set of eyes on it that doesn't have sort of a biased look at it. I, I generally trust American Pool in the sense that I, I think that they're gonna give us good advice, but I think it's certainly worth. Getting somebody, as I said, getting a fresh set of eyes on it and just double checking to make sure that the work that we're doing is the work that we need to do.
Do these guys, are they just inspector types? They don't build pools or anything, do they?
They do. Yep, they do. They, they, they do it all. I can send you the information for the company if you want.
It's okay, I, I, I leave it to you. I wouldn't even know how to evaluate it, but, um, no, I just. Why I asked that question is I don't want someone who's gonna come back and say, hey, yeah, you gotta build a whole new pool. Or, you know, you know, we can do this better than American Pools, you know, because they're in their, in their own, you know, their, their, their own interests. I want our interests.
Yeah, I, I think they, we were pretty clear about the scope of what their work is. And that, that they are, they advertise that as one of the services that, that they perform. You know, one of, one of the things that they've said to me, or actually, this was something Rob, Rob said to me. Is, you know, you never know for sure when something's going to fail. You, you, you try to be proactive. And all, all putting something new does is sort of reset the clock for us. But there's no way that we can say, well, we know the pool's gonna fail in 10 years if we. It could be five years, it could be 25 years, but we. As the mayor said, there, there's emerging technology now, even better than, I think, six or seven years ago. We got some sense, we did a little bit of core sampling that indicated that there were no. There were no structural issues in the concrete of the pool and no observable issues. And so that led us to believe seven years ago that there was no major problem with the pool. I think we would do a sim, we're gonna do a similar study this time and try to, try to make the best recommendation. And decision based on that data. But all, but all of it, you know, to, to your point, the only last thing I'll say is that it. All of these are sort of the next layer down. So if we take out the pool, it means we take out all the pipes and it means we take out all the decks. So. I, it, I think it makes sense for us to figure out how deep, how deep, just to extend this analogy. How deep do we need to go on this project? Because if we don't go deep enough this time, we're just gonna have to tear it all up and redo it again.
Okay, I get it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Kumala.
Matt, thanks for, for this report. I mean, it's what, the second month of the fiscal year and I think you have moved on. All the big CapEx items. This is the streetlights, the street. Curbs and drainage system piece, the pool piece, right? And so I appreciate that. And I think these were the big items and this is, you know, when it comes to early spring. We're gonna look back and these are the things that are gonna matter, whether we got them done or not. On the streetlights, when do you think, so I heard you say, so a lot of progress, because I remember. You were not even getting any luck from Pepco. Now you are, now you are in conversations, you have a line of sight to potentially a pilot. When do you think the pilot will be on?
So. I don't have a great answer for, I, I, I don't know that I can give you. I believe that they had said that it would take them about. I thi, I think all of, all of them take about eight weeks to procure the lights. And so I think that's why they were saying, you know, we can order about 60 at a time and do it within eight weeks. And then eight weeks later, we could do another 60. So I think it would be the same thing, that the idea being. Oh, on August 12th, we meet with them and select the, the locations for a pilot program. And then whatever the math is, eight weeks from there would be October, they're installed. And we leave them up for a month or two and then we're, we're green light to move ahead and begin installations after that point.
Fine. And then, you know, on the, just to be clear, on the streets, the RFP is out? Or will be out, so?
It's, I haven't, I haven't posted it yet. I submitted it to Doug to take one final look over. And and then I'll probably have Ron take a look as well, just very quickly before I, before I put it out.
And and you were saying earlier, you think most likely we'll have the input back for the budget season. For next year, right? That's what we are targeting here.
That's, that's the idea of trying to get it out as, you know, as soon as possible right now to try to start to gather the data in the fall. And put it, get it in the, in, in the spring when we are doing budget talks so that, you know, when May comes around, yeah. in the spring when we are doing budget talks so that, you know, when May comes around you and we're adopting the budget, we have a sense from them of what our year-over-year strategy is for streets and curbs, gutters, sidewalks, et cetera.
Great. Thank you.
And now last but not least, Councilor Roback.
Um, well, I was just going to answer like for the, for the, um, street lighting thing, Matt. I think that he, Matt's right. Like he had said, it would take seven to eight weeks to put in a work order. So like, no matter what happens, it's going to always be like that two months or two months out from, you know, whatever time period that it starts. Um, and then, uh, but he did say that they could do, like, he thought that he could do it in a year or so. Um, for the whole, for the whole project, if we just continue to kind of keep scheduling them out like that. Um, and then other than that, uh, yeah, I'm just really like, when, so when do we, when will we know more about the pool? In terms of like, when that consultant comes in and looks at it, like, when are we going to have to kind of be? I mean, obviously, like, you know, the, the sooner we start any of this, like, the better because you know, it does put probably 2023 in jeopardy. Um, for starting before, you know, swim season and stuff. I mean, it's, it's definitely worrisome. So when will they be able to like, give a second opinion on everything?
I put in a call and left a message with them today. Unfortunately, haven't, didn't hear back today. Um, uh, I did get confirmation from them last week that, you know, that our, the agreement was was good and that they had received our retainer. So I, I was hoping to get them in this week to try to begin the work, um, so that we can know by, you know, mid-August, you know, when we can begin to start. And I've, I've tried to stress to them that we, I, I've explained to them what our window looks like and that we are in a real-time crunch. And, um, so I don't, I don't have them on, on our calendar yet, unfortunately, but uh, I'm definitely aware and trying to pass along to them the urgency, uh, and, and just how time sensitive it is.
Yeah, okay. That's, that's it. But thank you for everything. This has been very helpful.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. See you on August 15th. Work session 5:30. And is there a motion? Safe travel.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, can I, can I make one, one quick point before we, we go? Um, because I just wanted to mention that in September, we'll begin our hybrid meetings and I, and the mayor and I, I think are planning to, to try that out in August. I think one of the things that we'll need to talk about is what our expectations are for, um, our, our others, our contractor, our de facto staff like Doug and Ron. Um, and the other thing is that Linda and I are, are looking into ordering some tablets. And so I, I wonder if maybe we should do a initial order and if you wanted to come test them out, or if we should just go ahead and buy them and that's what we would, that's what we would use.
I think we decided we're just going to buy them.
Okay.
So thank you, everyone. We'll see you on August 15th and safe travels.
Good night.
Your motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
To adjourn.
Great. The meeting, thank you. Bye-bye, everybody.
Good night, everyone.
Bye, everybody.
All right.